We'll be good to go. Well, we'll give it another thirty seconds. Twenty, ten, done. Okay. Welcome to our city council work session. It's the seventh of January two thousand twenty-five. It's Shane Bott's birthday today. If anybody sees Shane Bott, would you please tell him hello and happy birthday? He's an old guy. He's older than I am, so please, just a note to start this meeting. We're grateful to have everybody and we're gonna start with, uh, by doing away with the roll call and just announce that Brian is out of town today. And we'll be looking forward for him to join us in a couple of weeks. And he's excused. All the rest of us are here and ready to go. As are the seats filled, so. Good to be here. Like to start with a pledge of allegiance. Would anyone like to lead us?
Okay.
Okay.
Please stand. Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Also like to ask if there is someone that would like to lead us in a inspirational thought or an invocation today?
Mike Wall could have done it, but he's just walking away.
Who did?
Mike Wall.
Oh.
He just walked out.
Mayor, I'll be glad to.
Okay, thank you.
Dear Father in heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet as a council. We're mindful of the responsibilities we have and for the decisions that we make. Grateful for our community and for our citizens and ask thee to bless them. We're grateful unto thee for all that thou blest us with, especially for thy son and his atoning sacrifice. And we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Art. Thanks, Jason. Appreciate it. We want to go straight into some recognitions. Are we missing? Oh, he's coming back, so we're, we're not hurt completely. So, uh, do you wanna start with that?
Which one do you wanna do first, Mayor?
Uh, Braden, please.
Come on up, Braden. Yeah. I want you, I want you to read your own.
Nothing better than blowing your own horn, you know?
Uh, Braden Gold, this is Officer Braden Golding. I think y'all know him, but he is the employee of the month. And it is the great, with great pleasure that we announce Officer Braden Golding is the employee of the month for January twenty twenty-five. Officer Golding, a dedicated member of the Santaquin Police Department since two thousand and twenty-two, has consistently demonstrated exceptional growth, commitment, and professionalism in his role. Since joining our team, Braden has quickly adapted to the demands of the position, continually expanding his knowledge and skills. As the lead field training officer, Braden plays a vital role in shaping the development of our new recruits. He takes, he takes this responsibility seriously, holding his trainees to the highest standards and ensuring they are well-prepared for their future roles within the department. In addition to his duties, as field training officer, Braden is a skilled UAV drone operator. Drawing on his previous military experience, he has become an invaluable asset in this area, regularly assisting other agencies due to his expertise, expertise and reliability. His proficiency with the drone operations enhances our department's capabilities and contributes to the pub, contributes to public safety in significant ways. Braden's worth ethic, dedication, and attention to detail are evident in everything he does. He approaches every task with determination, ensuring it is, it is completed too efficiently. Completed? Who wrote this? Austin wrote this? It is completed efficiently and to the highest standard. His contributions make him an indispensable member of the Santaquin Police Department. And it is an honor to recognize him for his hard work and unwavering commitment. Did you need a speech or?
Oh, yes. Yes, that's, that's a given.
I don't want him. His twenty-second head up wasn't good enough.
Come on, Braden, you gotta step up now.
Well, I just thank you guys for the opportunity. Um, I've really enjoyed working here for Santaquin and their police department here. It's been great getting to know the job and get to know everybody and interacting with the citizens. Something I look forward to doing is to come into work and getting involved in different things. And I just, I like the opportunities that I've been able to get here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Rod, where's his corporal stripes?
Braden's corporal stripes? He isn't corporal yet.
Well, what's the delay?
Well, give him, give patience, grasshopper.
Here, I got you a picture. Two, Rod.
Oh, yeah, this is the important part.
Yes, sir. Well, some of them. I think we're missing one, right? Would you like him to come up here and stand or where do you wanna?
You know, I, I really would, the ones that you want to, uh, uh, note tonight. But also, I wouldn't mind a picture of everybody tonight, too, with us, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Why don't you guys come up here instead of sitting in the back? I have a hard enough time remember your, remembering your names without seeing their faces. I guess we'll go from front to back. First one's Carson Ruiz. He just come over to us from Orem. He's a Santaquin kid, grew up here. Mind your way.
You're fine.
The second one's Brienne Moore. She also came to us from Orem. She lives down in Mona. Uh, Taylor Baldwin, he came to us from the sheriff's office. I believe he's a Santaquin kid as well, right?
Yeah. What was your last name again?
Baldwin.
Baldwin. Okay.
And the next one is Kellen Warwick. He came to us from Salem City. Uh, he lives in Mona, too, or Nephi, sorry. And the last one we talked out of coming into retire, out of retirement and coming to work for us is Brett Lloyd. He retired from Salem City, I don't know, a year or so ago. And then we are missing Dylan Owens. He's tied up at the jail, so.
Oh.
And that is the new one since July of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, where's Dylan? And then I thought, well, maybe it was his night off, but not at jail.
He's at the jail.
Good.
Questions or?
Are there questions? Oh, no.
You can ask him questions if you'd like.
Do you guys have any? None?
I'm suspecting Orem City doesn't like us very much.
Is it Brett?
Yes.
I know you from somewhere.
I think he took you to jail.
Maybe, maybe that's why. I was principal at Landmark High School. I think we had some things we did together when I was principal over there, but you just look familiar to me.
He worked in Payson for, what, twenty years?
Oh, maybe that's what it was, too. So I was at Payson Junior for quite a while, too. Yeah. Okay. Well, we're great to, it's great to have you guys here. We appreciate all you do. You know, I like the thoughts that we have, uh, South Utah and North Uab County kind of nailed here. Little bit of the San Pete Valley with Owens, but I appreciate every one of you. You know, I, I'm surprised sometimes because I, I get worried, where are we? Are we filling those positions? And all of a sudden, I saw, uh, I forgot your name, Mrs., Miss?
Moore.
Moore. I saw you out, uh, having someone pulled over and, and I just kinda stopped a little bit down the road and went, yeah, this is good, but I didn't know you, you know? I had to come back and ask Rod, oh, that's Moore. She just started. She came from Orem or something, you know? And I thought, oh, these are good people. And we realize, you know, the cream of the crop is sometimes tough, especially when you got thirty years of experience or whatever behind you. But it's also such a benefit to us. I'm glad you're here. I, I hear nothing but good about all of you. Really tickled about coming from Utah County, too. I had a discussion with one of the commissioners just the last couple of weeks about how important it is to maybe turn your head now and again, cause we may get one or two of those. Glad you're here. Very glad you're here. And hoping for all kinds of new things and good things to happen. You know, since you have us on a hot seat and Braden, you can jump up there, too. I hate to see you off out in the distance, but. Do you have any questions for us? Are there any things you want us to work on? This is an opportunity for a couple of minutes to say, hey, this is a good thought or, you know?
Don't let Rod intimidate you, okay?
If you wanna tell us about that old dang chief, let us know. You good? All right. To get to really know you. Is that what you're saying?
Bring him back in a year.
You know what? I, I am just so glad you're here. I, I hope that we're living up to the promises that have been made and the way things are going. And, uh, you know, this is gonna get better and better. All right.
What was your assignment with the county patrol?
I worked in the jail for two years and I went on the road for a little bit.
Okay. I'm retired county, so I just ask.
Yeah, and see what we ended up with. An old guy.
Yeah. Every day, every day, day older.
He is. He's the only one older than me, so, yeah. Anyway, uh, thank you. Thank you all for what you do and for being here tonight. And, uh, gosh, we've probably jumped the gun. Okay. What, what I would like is, why don't we get a lineup up here and I want the council down here. Let's, let's get a picture of all of us together. Is that okay? I know there's more. We're missing, what, seven or eight officers for tonight? So we'll have to get them in the next shot, so.
We're only missing one.
Of the new ones. New, the new ones, yeah.
Yeah. But the whole department.
He wants the whole team.
Good. Okay, let's do it.
You want us to?
Yeah.
All right.
He thinks we're important. I don't know why.
Mike?
Well, there was quite a discussion about not.
Council stayed up top. I wonder, yeah, council go up on top and be behind, yeah. No, I was up to stand in the back. That's great.
I'm the only firefighter amongst all of you. Gotta hold my end of that. Wait, wait, you gotta wait.
I don't know if I'm calling this thing back here. Are we centered?
Yep.
You know what's important.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes. You and Brett both.
Tell him he came from us, too.
Play the neat guy games, like, hey, I don't know how to do this. Send this report back to me, so. See you later.
Okay. Years ago. Uh, discussion items. We're gonna talk about, uh, our master plan projects, especially in the park. And, uh, a lot of this came up because questions that were asked about, what are we gonna do with this mud hole to the west? And, uh, there've been a lot of thoughts that have been thrown out. And I thought, as, as, uh, we were meeting with the staff the other morning, we talked about, wouldn't it be nice to have a little bit of a discussion of some of the things that we may want to pin up on the board when we're, uh, getting ready for our budget? Are there any things that we wanna change that we may have looked at last year? Are there some directions we wanna go? I, I really felt like if we could take a few minutes now and just discuss it, it may give us a little bit of a heads up on some thoughts we've had, some ways we wanna go with some things. And it gives us a little bit of an op, opportunity, and I knew it was gonna be kinda slow like this, that we can just talk. Now, Brian did say a few things, but I didn't see anything in the email that he sent other than I have my ideas on what we could do. I know he's talked about trails and a few other things. And those trails didn't come as high as other things did. And neither did some of the other. And, and where we may end, the end of our, uh, what do we call that?
Budget planning session. Oh, the scoring, the rankings.
The listing, the prioritization.
Prioritization listing, yeah, yeah.
May just change altogether, but it'll change altogether because what we see in the future, what we have in our thoughts. And so I wanted to just kinda bring it up. Now, however, I saw this list, I, I guess that came from John.
So, Mayor, if I may, can I step in and just kinda give you an idea where we're going?
IFPP?
Uh-huh.
IFFP?
So, the, the main impetus of this is that we have had multiple conversations with multiple council members, with the mayor, with staff. And, and so we've got at this point, you know, we're kinda like a shotgun. We've got, we're going off in different, in eighteen different directions. And so what we wanted to do is try and bring this back a little bit because we can't really score or have the time during the budget planning session to necessarily go over twenty-seven different projects that people have talked to us about. No, no fewer than a dozen projects have been discussed with, with staff, myself, Jason, John Bradley, the mayor, over the last six to eight months. And so we wanted to try and bring it back and say, okay, what, what are the top projects that we should be bringing back that the council feels like is a priority for the budget planning session? Because we're not gonna have enough money to do everything. It just doesn't happen that way. So let me, let me go to the IFFP, which is part of the master plan. It's called the Impact Fee Facilities Plan. And on the bottom of page six, it starts with the projects that are, uh, in the, in the city's master plan and on project six, these are eligible for impact fees. If they're not on this list, they may be in a lower list or a different list in our master plan, but they're not with it, not planned to be or anticipated to be within the next ten, six to ten-year horizon, which is when we have to use impact fees. So what we, what I have done on your, on your desks, you have two sheets. You have the, the staple sheet on the front is the list of, of all the projects that go with the master plan. There's some, I don't know, twenty-seven or more projects, depending on how you break it down, that have everything from trails to parks to, to playgrounds, to the, the skate park, to the bike park, all of that kinda stuff. That, that list on page, on the front page is a list for, um, all of the projects that are in the master plan. If you turn the page, that second page are the ones that are eligible for park impact fees to be used on them right now. Now, that doesn't mean that the ones on the front can't have park impact fees used for them. They're, they're just not designated as being in the current six to ten-year horizon. And so what the mayor has asked, or let me rephrase that. What I would recommend, and the mayor felt like that this was a good idea, was that we can talk about all of these projects and different projects that are out there, but at the end of the day, we really need your top two or three projects to come back to a, a, a shorter list, as it were, for the, the budget planning session, okay? There, there's, there's, you know, when you, when you, if you look at all the projects on here, you've got some twenty to thirty million dollars worth of projects that are anticipated within the five to six to ten-year horizon. We don't have that much money. We, we, we will likely bring in this year and the next year roughly around seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, plus or minus, for park impact fees to be able to build projects. Okay? And so we needed to be able to try and pare this down and say, okay, which, which projects would, would you, would be on your highest priority so that we're not taking hours and hours during the, the budget planning session to present all thirty-seven projects that are in the master plan or all, I think there's seventeen of them on this list here in the front, but there's actually more than seventeen cause some of the trails aren't listed. So we, we've heard everything from a trail from this building, center of the city hall, to the mouth of the canyon, a trail from Summit Ridge Parkway down by, by the Ford dealership, the new Ford dealership, under the freeway and over to hook up to the trail that's on Highland Drive. We've heard other, other parts of trails and, and Mayor Hunsaker, when he was in office, one of his higher priority trails was what we call the Red Barn Road Trail or the Red Barn Trail, just a trail going from in-town here out to meet the, the north end of the, the widened part of Summit Ridge Parkway, or the Frontage Road, I mean, going out to Summit Ridge. So at the top of the page, you'll notice that there are a couple of, of things on there that we feel like are probably the more tippy-top priorities because we've already budgeted, if you recall, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase a building for the rec building over here on the, on the rodeo ground site. Okay? That, if you remember, that's phase one, just purchasing the building. Now, just so you're aware, that's out to RFP right now for an architect to help us get that design and get the building ready to go and get it to order. Now, remember that that's just the building. That doesn't give us the electrical, the HVAC, the plumbing and other things that we're going to need to make that building functional. So that's why we've got what we're calling phase two of outfitting the building to make it operational for use. Is, is likely, we believe, but I'm not putting the numbers in there for you. You need to put those numbers in there, that there could be five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars more this next year that needs to go into that phase two for us to have that building operational. Okay? Another thing that we've talked about is the cemetery building. We have the, the cemetery, uh, the lot, two, two lots north of the cemetery where we have for Public Works. We have a building budget of this year. Again, that's going out with that same RFP for us to build, to get that building designed and get it ordered. There would subsequently be a phase two of that building at some point in the future. Now, it doesn't, probably doesn't have as much prioritization as finishing out the rec building, as it were, because we can park tractors or baccos or equipment in there and, and we can build out a couple of small offices or a restroom or, you know, a concrete floor or whatever at some point in the future. It's probably not as, as urgent on that side of phase two, but we wanted to put it on here nonetheless because it's already something that's gonna be started this year with the current budget that we have. The, the next thing on there is we know we've talked about a skate park over the last months, right? The, the, the two things that we talked about the last time with the skate park was, uh, cost and, um, location, right? Those are the two things, whether we can get a grant funded for it and where, where are we gonna put it? Right? Some of the things that we've heard talked about is with staff and others is, do we put it at Harvest View? Do we put it at Centennial Park? Do we, I think there's four, I think there's four locations that were, that were, um, recommended in the, in the, um, design that the skate park company did for us when they also did the same thing for the Bike Skills Park, right? They have the same contract and did both parts for us. And then from there, it's, we've heard, again, we've got the splash pad slash water feature that could be between here, that's in our master plan, that would be where the old building came down from, right? That's the mud hole that the mayor's talking about, just west of city hall. And, and what do we do with that? We've heard, well, we need parking and we need a splash pad. And do you wanna put some money towards the stage? Remember that we have fifty thousand dollars sitting there from a private donation in Friends of Santaquin right now, today, that has fifty thousand dollars sitting there to help pay for a stage and AV equipment for that stage. So the, the, the reality of this here is we really need to pare this down to hopefully under ten projects to, or less, to bring to you during the budget retreat because there's just not going to be those amount of funds. Just to give you an idea, the, the estimate in the master plan, just for the water feature next door, is two point seven million dollars. Okay? The stage is another, I don't know, half a million dollars. And the, the amphitheater is another. If you look at the city center block as a whole, it's about nine million dollars, now maybe seven. If you look at finishing out Harvest View, for instance, Harvest View finishes out under the current design, which has also been talked about, maybe there's some potential changes there. That, that also finishes out at eleven million dollars. So there's a couple of strategies that we've used in the past, and that is that we've saved money over several years. In fact, that's how we built the first part of the soccer fields was, if I remember right, about two million dollars or three million dollars went into that to bring all the utilities in and all the roads in and all the access and all the water lines, put the bathroom in and all that kinda stuff. And we, and that's why we do things, at least as far as parks and impact fees go, why we do things as a, as a phased approach. So with that, I will answer any questions that you have. But at the end of the day, the, the point of this, again, at the mayor's direction, is for you as council members to put one, two, and three, if you wanna put three. If you only wanna put two or one, you can do those same things. But which ones of these are your priority? And as they score out, in other words, if one of these gets a one, it probably won't come to the, the planning committee, the, the budget planning session. If it gets two or three or more votes, then it, it's gonna be obviously closer to the top. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions on that?
So top two in each area, right?
Yeah. Not, not in each of the three sections, top three total. Which, which ones of yours are the top three? Maybe it's the top three in each category, that's fine, if you wanna break it down that way. But, but in reality, so think about it, we got ten, we got five council members. If there's three and all of you picked five, three different projects, there's fifteen that come to the budget planning session. We just don't have time for that. So please, go ahead.
I think it was answered, but each section is separate or is the whole thing linear?
It, it was intended to be linear.
Okay.
But Mayor, your direction, and it sounds like maybe the council would like to do it differently. We can have some discussion on that. It's not hard set. You, you tell us how you would like to do it, and then maybe we, again, bring the top two or three in each one of these categories to the budget planning session for scoring.
I like what you said. I'm just confused. I like just putting top three.
Top three overall.
Top three overall, and then we, it limits the number, cause we don't have the money to do them all anyway.
Again, it's your, it's your discretion. We're not trying to say, you can't have nine choices here. We're trying to say, we're trying to figure out how to pare this down so that we don't bring twenty-seven different choices to the plan, the, the budget planning session.
Well, there's one more step that goes beyond this that rarely we direct or talk about until all of a sudden, at times, we're surprised, and that's, uh, RAP tax. In, in a couple of months, and generally after we've had our budget retreat, the, the RAP tax will board, will get together, and they'll make a decision. Well, we need to think about the monies that they have that we could maybe prioritize. These are the things that we would like you to consider getting done so that those, those funds can be channeled in the way that this council really feels would do us best.
And that's really what this comes down to, is it comes down to prioritization. There's never enough money to go around to do all the projects that we talk about. And that's why we've gotta, this is kind of a pairing down before the scoring, I guess is the best way to put it because otherwise, we're just gonna take a lot of time trying to score projects that really don't have a relevance or a chance of getting funded this year, as it were, in the budget planning session. Does that make sense?
I, you know, do any of you have some things that are just burning?
That would be your number one or two on here, right?
Yeah. Are, are there some things you're just saying, hey, I, I would like us to consider this for this reason, and maybe we discuss it even before we prioritize something would be good.
I, the, the recreation activity building is, I think, my opinion, since that was brought up, is we need to get that done sooner than later. We're already behind on places to have some of the activities that they've come up with. And we're used, as far as I know, we've used all the elementary school space we can use, and they're not building a new one anytime soon. So I think we need that recreation activity building really quick. Other than that, I, it's personal after that, I think, on what we think is most important. But that one, to me, helps more people than, maybe not more than all the others, but in my mind, it helps more of our youth and people be active and stay healthy. That's a personal view.
I think those are the kinds of things we may even want to focus on when we get into our retreat is, look at those things that are most important even to each and every one of us. So, you know, I, I personally feel we've spent a lot of money and we've got a lot of, uh, of, uh, grants for the, for the bike park. And there's not really a lot that we need to spend any money on there. And, uh, you know, if we're gonna build some trails, great, I'd just go up and build them, you know? It's not a big deal at this point. Uh, I think those are the kind of things we can just kind of set aside a little bit and and focus more on the rec building and you know, some other things. Uh, I I've seen great ideas for the Ted Allen Park that never have come to fruition, things that included more holes in their disc golf, more trees planted around, which they planted a few more last fall. Uh, and and one of those came from uh, Mrs. Allen in town. They they paid for and had one of those brought in, but.
My kids only go up there to fish.
Really?
Yeah.
Or bear watch, you know, there's all kinds of things you can see up there.
So something I wanted to mention, and I I think because we're so close to the budget planning session, this this is great to to help uh, make that meeting more efficient. Uh, these are what's on the the list of park impact fee projects right now. What I want to mention is I know some of you have approached me about ideas that aren't necessarily in our master plan, uh, new ideas or visionary ideas or things like that. Uh, that's a different process. And and I think, you know, we kind of started the conversation with the city center block. I know last time is a lot more informational for you to let you know where we're at right now with the plan. But if if there's projects that you want to do, you know, there may be that that space down below, write those in, and those could be projects that that we need to start uh, discussing in 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 maybe a master plan update or a master plan amendment to include projects like that. It's probably not going to be involved in the budget planning session meeting we're about to go into. But I know a lot of you've had projects that that are kind of uh, new ideas that aren't necessarily in the plan. And so uh, you've probably seen my philosophy. If you haven't, I can I can help you understand it, but but sometimes we'll get the vision, the plan and the implementation all kind of mixed up. It's if we can keep those kind of in in their their uh, you know, the order of of what where they happen, then that'll make things a lot more smooth and it'll make things a lot more, it'll make things less confusing. So if you if you have other ideas that aren't even on this list that that you've come up with and that you'd like to pursue, it's, we need to look at it and discuss it in in a master plan amendment. Now, another thing I I thought about is some of these projects are really expensive. Maybe maybe there's an option, or maybe there's a a recommendation that that you hold off on spending for a year so that you you can build up some of the impact fees to pay for some of these larger projects. So uh, I think as this was explained, I think this is great to make our meeting more efficient, but but I think you need to think of all the different angles of of how to uh, implement and how to plan for some of the projects that that some of you have come up with and shared with me.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Jason. That's great. And Lynn, you're exactly right. This kind of goes to the car and the driver thing, right? We can do almost everything, anything, we just can't do everything. And so the more split out we get or the more spread out we get, and the more we we, I don't want to say dilute the funds, but focus it towards one thing or another, or try to spread it too thin, then we don't have any projects that are done, and we have fewer projects that are done. So you you make a good point in that that we're we're already pretty much going down that road. We've already allocated three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year. Are we going to let that three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars get skipped over to finish that building at the at the cost of finishing that building for other projects? So that is a very, that's that's why I did not fill in number one up here because I I thought, in fact, to be honest with you, when I did this, I put number one right there and I thought, nope, I'm not going to do that because that's your decision. You you are the policymakers and you are the prioritization of things that need to get done. If that comes back and there's three or four of you that have that as a number one rank, then that's great. We'll bring it to the budget session, budget planning session, and we'll go from there. Right, so you you have a very good point there that it it can get to the point where we're where we're going in too many different directions. And that's why I wanted to bring this is because the last six months, we have been talking about all of these fingers over here of different, like Jason says, ideas that don't even exist on here, but could. They're not, they're not things that can't be done. We just can't spend money on them right now on using impact fees because they're not in our master plan. If they're in our master plan and on this sheet, we can certainly spend funds on it. That's the whole point of of taking that big master plan and paring it down to a six to ten year horizon.
Is is that master plan going to be worked on this this year?
I think it's next year, isn't it?
No, it's, it was recently updated, just just a a year or so ago. The parks, recreation, trails.
What's the one this year?
Uh, right now, we're working on sewer, and then we anticipate next fiscal year will be public safety. So uh, but the thing is, is the master plan is not set in stone. It's and it can it can be amended at any time. And so, you know, like I I mentioned, the the city center, uh, there there's a lot of ideas generated uh, towards what to do with this this block. I think part of it's because city hall's here now, we've got the the old building torn down, and there's there's kind of a blank slate that gets people's ideas and excitement kind of going, but uh, uh, yeah, it's there there's a process to to get some of these these plans, and and I think for staff, it gets it's it's tricky when we hear individual ideas over and over and 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 I think bringing those discussions to the body as a whole is is the way to to help vet out uh, the prioritization of what we fund and the prioritization of what we need to consider amending in our master plan. So hopefully, this is kind of a helpful uh, framework to to help you uh, approach us about the ideas that you're wanting to to consider or start, you know, seeing implemented.
Can I be a negative Nancy and attack this from a different direction? I, there are projects that I have no interest in. One of be, one of them I know is going to be a contentious issue, being the skate park. I've been very vocally against that, and I will continue to do so for for reasons that I won't discuss now, but that's not a project that I would ever, I don't think I would ever vote for at this point. So for whatever that's worth, as as a council, as we consider these things, maybe we ought to attack issues that aren't going to be contentious. So just a thought.
Well, the other thing we really look at here is uh, the priorities may take care of all.
Sure, I understand. I just.
Last year, when we did vote, the skate park was right at dead bottom, if I remember right. And and I know that others have felt strong about that, and we need to just keep it in the discussion.
No, I understand, and that's what we do is talk about things.
Design, but you know, it's it's uh, I think it's only fair that we discuss it.
And can I just say from a staff standpoint, we are indifferent. You you guys have a list of things that we can spend money, at least impact fees, we can spend other money on things, but there's not probably lots of extra money going from somewhere else to this, but we we are literally indifferent. We don't we we don't, we we do what you give us to do. You give us the prioritization of where you want the funds to go, and that is what we do. And and again, as Jason said, we will affect changes in the master plan. If that's something that you want to do, I like Jason's idea. If you have thoughts on things that don't appear on either one of these sheets, write it down at the bottom and help us to understand that.
And when we see that, we can see if it fits into the the master plan some way into the impact fees, or if it needs to be some, an amendment or something new like that. I would say, uh, I agree that we're indifferent, but I also think you may get some recommendations from community services and the needs that they have, or you may get some recommendations from from community development of of of, you know, timing of of projects and how they can can add or or, you know, enhance an area of the community, or where there's a need for parks that that might be a hole. I mean, that's partly what our our master plan goes into is is we need to have parks and and recreational opportunities within, you know, so much distance, quarter mile, whatever it is of of every resident. There may be some of those holes where where there can be a project that helps fill a hole where where, you know, one area of town might might not have a a park at the moment. And so there's recommendations that will probably come out, and I know John Bradley is going to have some of those because of some of the programming and and uh, and needs that he has in 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 his department. But uh, yeah, this is a good opportunity to really get kind of a pre-prioritization understanding from you so that uh, we can, we can take that to the meeting and be more effective and efficient with our time.
Well, I really appreciate this, and I like the idea because it will save time in that meeting. That's, I mean, we had, I don't know how many projects up there every year that we have to go put stickers by or whatever we do, and this, I I love this idea because it'll narrow it down before we even start. And like you said, we can't do all those projects anyway.
Right. Again, that's the, because we've heard so many different things from so many different directions, we wanted to try and get some type of a of a of a consolidated prioritization list going into it. Otherwise, we're looking, li- literally, we're looking at eighteen projects that maybe sixteen of them don't even make any sense because they're not going to get funded. So that's why we're trying to be where we're at with this. And I think Jason has a great point. We've already done some of the things that that John Bradley came to you six months ago or four months ago and said, hey, what about this other building? Would you be willing to to look at reallocating some of these other funds where we got the grant funds up here to do that? So that's a perfect example of it is in the master plan, and then we can build it, so that's beneficial. We didn't have to update the master plan. So you will get recommendations and thoughts from us. But again, at the end of the day, you set the the budget and the prioritization on on where we go for the next fiscal year.
I, you know, it it's really good for us to kind of also understand uh, where each of these are, what's going on with them, you know, we're all little by little learning and I think we find out new things all the time, but uh, uh, certainly, there are people that are in our ear and other comments that you may see that you may go, yeah, we need to think about this, or and and I don't want it to die, but I want it to be prioritized so that not only are we kind of in line with where we want to go with this, but so are the directors, so is uh, our finance, who's she's putting everything together, but also uh, the likes of of John and and others that are trying to get grants that may be more in line with what we would like to really accomplish this year. And we may find that there are going to be some other funds that get a little further down on that list. But we need a list that's a priority that we want to address.
Right.
Okay, so the best thing at this point is maybe take these and then just get them to you and uh.
So by the end of the week, if you would get me your priorities, prioritized, prioritized list, one through three on here, total conglomerate, one through three. Again, I recognize that may seem kind of limiting, but it's going to get us to the end of the day where we're at with the with getting through the budget planning session prioritized. So thank you. And and just so that you know, Mayor, um, Councilmember Del Rosario has asked me for uh, this, and I will send it to him as well so that he has that to to get me his scoring back as well.
Yeah, was, he was watching this.
He's watching, but he's not able to participate. That's correct.
That's good.
Yep. And thank you, council members and mayor. I think this was a a very beneficial and good discussion for us to, again, to just get a little more focused on where we're going.
Yeah. Appreciate it, and uh, we probably can move on to the next item for the upcoming agenda and just go over that for a minute.
Sure, Mayor and Council. I just would also mention that Jason Bond has another meeting to attend at seven, so he's not going to be here. So if we, as we go through things, if you have questions for him, I I'm happy to help, but he's here for this meeting and not for the next one, so. Okay, so going into the next meeting, we have uh, just the work session and regular meeting minutes. I don't know of any changes or corrections or anything on that. Art, it sounds like Art's got a couple that.
No, they've been made.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good. Um, city expenditures for the the twelfth through the third. And then two uh, resolutions for surplusing the property. The first one's a ratification as we as we talked about some a week or so ago, we talked to the and polled the council and and asked for this, and and we got four out of five responses for that. So we we brought this back to just surplus this uh, it's a, it's a specialized duty rifle for the police department that will be surplus directly to the Utah County Sheriff's Office for for their purposes. Uh, for that specialized weapon. And then the other thing on on resolution oh two, that's some other bikes that we need to surplus and some desks and a table, I think, are the only things that are on there. So um, I I I don't know if the chamber's going to be here or not. We will plan on them being here. If they're not, that's fine, but.
You you do know that Jim has had some health issues.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure. I I chatted with him the other day and got him uh, some information, but I I hadn't heard back from him, so I'm still down.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I've had a couple of chats with him over email the last few days, and he seems to be doing pretty good, so that's great. Uh, business license report, Mayor, at your direction, do you want to do that now instead of in the regular meeting, or do you want to have me do it in Jason's absence? How would you want to do that?
Why don't, why don't we do it now? I don't, I don't think that'd be a bad thing.
Okay.
Since he's here, we can talk about it.
Great. Sorry, I should have given you heads up.
Got it pulled up there. So this, because we we finished the twenty twenty-four calendar year, this this refreshes the calendar year portion of of the building permit. Uh, we've got two this year so far. Uh, you can see already, this time last year, we were up to six. Uh, obviously, it's still, you know, we're only seven days into the year. But you can see that that all the the years bumped back and we have the totals uh, of the previous years, go back up. So that the total for twenty twenty-four was two hundred and sixty-eight total residential dwelling units, broken down into a hundred and sixty uh, single family and a hundred and eight multifamily with five new new commercial spaces. So you can see that's that's more than we've had in the last couple of years. Uh, the previous year, twenty twenty-one, was one of those uh, explosion years. Uh, was, we had two of those, and so that's now off of this report, but you can see that we're about back to average, if you will, uh, uh, maybe slightly above. So uh, fiscal year, we're now halfway through the fiscal year, and we are up to a hundred and twenty-two at this point. You can see this time last year, we were at a hundred and four, so we're a little ahead of pace. Uh, or not ahead of pace, but a little above uh, last year. Uh, and then, you know, there's the still the previous year totals. Uh, so we're we're right now probably on pace to to be closer to three hundred this fiscal year. Uh, but it obviously just depends on who knows what could happen in the in the market and and uh, in the the home construction world. And then for business license, we just have four new ones. Uh, three of them are home occupations. Uh, I usually don't don't dive into details of those, but I do try and point out the commercial businesses. One of them is new. This is Canyon Pizza. This is locating in the the vacancy where Main Street Pizza was, so um, yeah, um, that's the report unless you guys have any questions for me.
Are they open now?
Yes, they are.
Today. My understanding is they open today. At least that's the word.
And that's a business we stole from Payson, so.
Did they, did they relocate from Payson or are they both?
They did, yes. They were, I believe they were in the strip mall area out in front of Walmart.
Where Pizza Hut used to be.
Where Pizza Hut used to be, and so now we've gotten them from from Payson, yes.
Okay, good.
We didn't steal them. They just came on their own.
I know. I count that as stolen.
Should have had pizza tonight, I guess. Uh, I was going to ask, did you find out anything about what they were doing at the old family tree?
No idea, Mayor. I I heard that you said that there was some action activity there. I know that we've had at least a call to our building department to have the building official go out and meet with them, but I don't have any information or report. We have no current application of anything being turned in for any kind of construction or anything of that nature.
So the ghosts figure out to turn the lights on.
For for the last couple of years, it's just been sporadic phone calls about their options and what to do there. And so I know the the property owner, the the owner is is exploring their options. Uh, that's probably all that I can really tell you at this point, or really all that I know at this point.
Well, there were quite a few trucks out in the front, and there were people going in and out, and the lights were on and the glass windows on the west side were all to the point they were showing where the lights were all on.
Yeah, well, if 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 something happens there uh, without a business licensor or, you know, maybe some appropriate building permits, we'll have to to look into that a little bit more, but uh, nothing, nothing official, nothing that's come through us that we know about location.
Okay. Um, in the past, just one last thing before we kind of call it off for the day. Are there any other things?
No.
You you may have noticed me checking with Brett, our legal counsel, about this agenda item of um, business licenses. Since it's an agenda item, I think in the next meeting, we should at least reference to the fact that it was discussed in this meeting.
Sure. That'll work.
That's fine. It's on, I mean, agenda items is on for this meeting too, so.
Yeah. Um, just uh, a thought I wanted to uh, bring up, I have a meeting tomorrow with the family that would like to look at leasing the uh, uh, new or the new cemetery property for a a little while. Have you guys thought anymore about that? We we had that discussion. There was some figures that you guys kind of thrown out. I I don't really want to bring those up right now because I've asked them to come back with an offer, an offer that I might be able to bring to the this body and we can discuss. Um, I'm not sure where they want to go. They would like to use it. I said, you know, as as you're getting ready to look at this, I want no trees in it. I want, you know, uh, relatively simple because we don't want big investments put into this because I don't even know if we're going to lease it for a year, five years, ten years, what? And and that may be a consideration that we need to think about. And uh, we just need to be prepared for it, but I just. wanted to plant into you guys' mind, I'm meeting with them tomorrow morning. Uh, we'll talk about a few of those things. Anything that's a decision won't be made by me.
My only concern is if, if livestock were there, they'd have to be adequately fenced in and contained.
Well, I've had a call about someone that wanted to move livestock into there, but, uh, I, it's all dependent on how you want to, uh, lease the ground out. You know, they have other methods and I think we want to talk about all these things. So.
So Mayor, the last time that we talked about this, my recollection is, is that the council directed that, that we have some type of an agreement and that there is some type of remuneration. I don't think that we set a baseline or an amount or anything like that. I, and, and council, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection was, and I think Brett was part of that conversation as well, my recollection was that those are the two criteria, maybe even a, a proposal, a written proposal of what they would have and then, and then some type of a, an agreement where they carry their own insurance and those types of things. And then some type of re- remuneration that is commensurate for the use.
Yeah. I don't want to be spending any money or bringing anything into there for right now because it's an investment in land that we'll be using for a cemetery in the future. I don't want to be paying for pipes or doing other things that will absolutely not benefit us in any way. And, and anything that would be done in a permanent fashion would have to be in conjunction with what we had envisioned for, uh, uh, the city in the future and that use. Um, so it's, you know, I think we just need to look at the whole thing. That's why I think they're ready right now. It's January. Before they get into anything, they would like to know where they stand and if it's something that we can work with. Okay? Sound good?
There is one thing I thought of, Mayor. Um, we talked about earlier last year about doing some kind of a memorial for Bill Hoosier. And I think that anniversary is gonna approach us faster than we realize and we ought to start thinking about what we want to do there.
We talked about a, a renaming of park.
Yeah.
We do have, uh, all the approvals have come through for the renaming of the post office, which will probably take place in the spring. And maybe they'll even move it to where it's, uh, on that date, but I'm not sure that that date wants to be a remembered time.
I don't think we ought to do it on that date.
Yeah.
In that, in that time, within a week or so.
Uh, I, I agree with you. I, we talked about a couple of parks and a couple of other things that we could do. Um, I, I think we still should do that. Uh, if that's the case too, um, I believe we need to put that on the list of things that we want to fund and to what extent. You know, if we're gonna build a monument or have a statue or whatever.
Yeah. If we're gonna have, have to take the time to make a decision, then vote to approve it and then have it made, we probably ought to get on that soon.
I, I agree, full-heartedly. Yeah, sound good. Maybe, maybe we, we need to bring this up and have another discussion on it, uh, before our maybe we ought to make it part of the work session next, next time.
I think that would be good.
Uh, give us a little bit of time. That way we can try to find a space for it on the, uh, budget agenda that we'll be talking about just the week after next, next time's meeting or two weeks after. You know, maybe a good thing. Okay? Good point. Anything else?
Since I won't be at the regular meeting and, and Norm's asked me to attend a, another meeting in the city, um, I don't really have much to report, but I did want to give you just a heads up of, of some, some things that are coming forward on, on our other meetings. Uh, DRC may be canceled just to do the lack of agenda items. However, Planning Commission, we have a handful of them. Uh, we have a public hearing, uh, for just standards and spec annual update. Uh, that's something that we try and do on an annual basis to make sure that our standards and specifications are, are where they need to be. Um, another public hearing, this is for the rezone of a, a narrow strip of, of land. Uh, if you remember, we rezoned a number of properties that were city owned to public facilities. One of those was property that was negotiated in the development agreement, uh, with, near the scenic ridge estates development. Um, it went to the public facilities and there's a sliver of it that was, was part of that agreement to, to trade property. And so we're just gonna rezone that little, uh, strip of land, uh, back to the R twelve zone. So it's, it's really just some cleanup of, of some things that happened during those negotiations. Um, we have, uh, Peak Subdivision Preliminary Plan. This is not the Santa Quinn Peaks Industrial Park. This is, uh, a small residential subdivision in the core area of town. It's just a couple of lots. Um, and then there's gonna be a couple of discussion items. There's gonna be discussion on uh, a, a proposed amendment that staff has been working on. Uh, Ryan Harris and, and Aspen Stevenson have been working on some cleanup items in our code, uh, as it pertains to setbacks and the setback tables. Uh, there's a couple of discrepancies they've discovered, uh, particularly with like landscaping setbacks and that sort of thing. So they want to fix that. But they also want to, to make it a little bit easier for, for people to read and understand. So they want to discuss that first before they set a public hearing and move that through the legislative process. So they'll, they'll discuss that. And then they're gonna discuss uh, the possibility for, uh, home occupations to be in detached, uh, ADUs. Now, we don't have any legally detached ADUs built right now, uh, but nonetheless, uh, right now home occupations can only happen in the primary dwelling. And so there's, there's kind of an open discussion they'd like to have and, and explore if home occupations make sense to have in a detached, uh, building on a property. So they'll look into that. Again, that's just a discussion item, not, not the start of a legislative process, uh, but we'll, we'll see where, where those discussions go and, and, um, and they may eventually make it, make it to your level. So those are the couple of things that we have. Uh, you know, the new year's here and, and things are, are slowly gonna start picking up again with, with, uh, with things. So, uh, I'll, I'll try to, to, uh, keep you in the loop of, of pending applications and and projects that, that, that are coming through the process. Particularly now since a lot of developments don't come to you anyways because of some of the legislative changes that happened with, with, uh, city council being out of, out of that approval process for subdivisions and, and whatnot. So anyways, um, I haven't answered any questions you might have for me while I'm here.
Okay. Any other things we need to discuss? Then, uh, I would entertain a motion. We adjourn this session.
It's all moved?
It's been moved. Is it second?
Second.
Moved in second. And Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Yeah, aye. Lynn? I was just gonna see if you looked up.
Okay.